Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone. It's 7:04. Welcome, everyone, to the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board related to the Falcone Project in East Milton. I want to thank all of you residents who have come to attend tonight to have a nice discussion and to learn a little bit more about the project. So, as we move along, we're going to start off with Ned Corcoran, attorney for the Falcone Company. He's going to give a presentation to us, and that will be followed by Stephen Rhines, the president of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. And then, we will give anyone in the audience an opportunity to speak. We will have a three-minute limit per speaker, as we have a lot of people tonight. And then, also, we're going to ask that if a question has been asked, that we don't repeat that question, okay? We're going to ask people to sign in over at the desk when they do speak and announce themselves when they come up with their name and their address. So, without further ado, I'd like to call up Ned Corcoran.
Keep walking around. Take that with you. Take this with me. Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of both boards. My name is Ned Corcoran. I am a resident of Milton. I'm an attorney, and I am pleased to be here representing the Falcone family. Bob, Jeannie, Debbie, and Diane, a multi-generational family that grew up in Milton, they work in Milton, they own property and manage property in Milton, they care about this town, and they care about this neighborhood. They have a significant amount of pride in the quality of the work that they do, the quality of their projects, and they're looking forward to working with these boards, with the neighborhood, to move this to completion. I've identified other key members of the team, the architectural team, or the architects, design consultants, Verdant Landscape Architects, Howard Stein Hudson for traffic, Coleman Irwin on public relations, and yours truly for legal and permitting. So, quick overview, this is East Milton Square. The project site is sort of identified here. Closer look, the property currently constituted fronts on Adams Street with the Atlantic Insurance Building. The property includes four Franklin Street, which is an office building owned by the Falcones, and their offices in that building. It's more commonly known as the office for Dennis Sherman and other dentists in town. There's a large parking lot in the middle of the property. Along the corner of Franklin, there's a single-family lot. There's another single-family in the middle of Basset, and two-family on the corner of Basset and Adams Court. And then, there was a single-family behind the Atlantic Insurance Building, which has since been torn down. So, the property characteristics, this is a plan view of the property. Property characteristics are, it's five parcels combining for a total of about 51,000 square feet. Three of the parcels are in the business zone. The Franklin Street office building, the 524 to 526 Adams Street property, which is the Atlantic Insurance Building, and the 19 and 21 Basset Street, the two-family dwelling, is in the business zone. The two other single families are in Resident C's zone. Property, interestingly, contains two tiers. Look back to the plan view. The parking area, the frontage on Adams Street, and the four Adams Street building are at an elevation that is about 10 feet higher than the elevation of Basset Street itself, which is a significant benefit. In one sense, it makes it difficult from a design perspective; in another sense, it allows us to separate parking with respect to an underground parking at the surface of Basset Street and a separate surface lot currently generally in the area where the existing surface lot is now. The difficulty is that, unlike 36 Central, where the property slopes away from the business zone to the brook and allows you to sort of use that depth to your advantage, in this case, the property drops to the neighborhood, and it creates an issue with respect to how do you design a large building to meet the neighborhood along the edge of Basset Street? Because you have to deal with the issue of that first elevation of parking. So, I'm going to go through sort of a history of where we started, where we are today, and of significance where we are today, largely due to the efforts of the Falcone team and the East Milton Neighborhood Association, the representatives of the association. We've had two large meetings in East Milton and a number of other smaller meetings with representative of the neighborhood, the tone of which has been outstanding. We've worked hard, we've listened carefully, I think, to their concerns, and we've molded the project to a point today where I can't say we have an agreement, but I think we're much closer to where we might have been if we had not had sort of the goodwill and the good faith of the parties on both sides. And I'm really, I'll say it again later, but I really appreciate, and I know the Falcones appreciate, the effort of Steve Rhines, Pete Dunn, and the others in that team that have worked with us. We've had two recent meetings, two weeks ago Thursday, and this past Monday, we're meeting again next Tuesday, and we'll be meeting after that as well, continuing to try to work the project. The initial plan, if you recall, and we came in September, was a friendly 40B approach to the property, mixed-use development, 71 units of rental housing with 97 bedrooms, 25 percent of which would be affordable, 10,000-plus square feet of new retail on the first floor, 8,800 square feet of new office place on the second floor. There's an existing 6,200-square-foot office building, as I said, at 4 to Franklin, which we need to account for physically with respect to the site as well as parking. And we had a plan for 117 parking spaces, 80 under the garage level and 37 on the surface with stormwater to be contained under the building. We have an initial, not very attractive, look of a block of a plan on Adams Street, a second look at Adams Street with some detail. One of the things of significance here is that the Falcones own to the middle of Adams Court in conjunction with the Greenspan family on the other side. Adams Court is 10 feet wide as currently constituted. This first plan showed the building sort of built right to the edge of the right-of-way. That is a very tight right-of-way. Garbage trucks actually do make it down the court to pick up the garbage and other materials that are in the little parking area behind the Greenspan building. They make it down and back. It's open to vehicular traffic. It's very difficult to think about conflicts of vehicular and pedestrian. We have consciously pulled any one of the project plans sort of four feet in to create a sidewalk area and a wider feeling, a wider feel to the property. This is a look to the Franklin Street side, four stories, excuse me, again, four stories above the level of parking with a fairly flat roof. And then, initially, massing study of the property on the Basset Street side, which we intentionally took the top level of apartments and stepped them back so that there was a balcony space to sort of relieve some of that sense of scale. But that is three-plus stories over a parking story. Obviously, a difficult building to look at if you're looking at it from the neighborhood's perspective. From the other side, looking at the corner of Franklin and Basset, again, a large building. We rendered it differently in a later iteration to break up the massing with some coloring and some different materials, but it's still, there you are. In November, we came back with a second plan. It was still a friendly 40B. We reduced the density from 71 units to 61 units, from 97 bedrooms to 80, still 25 percent affordable. We reduced the commercial, the retail from 10,300 to about 8,800, close to 8,900, and the office from 80, a little over 8,000, down to 7,700, still comped with existing 6,200 square feet of office. We increased the parking to 125 spaces, while increasing both some underground and surface spaces, stormwater still under the slab of the garage. We did that by doing a couple of things. Most prominently was reducing the height of the building over Basset. So, in this case, we essentially took out a floor and dropped the top floor down. So, we have a three-stories-over parking at Basset Street, stepping all the way into a set of apartments over the parking area. So, a half-floor here and still four stories here. The original plan just had a parking entry on Franklin. After one of the early meetings with the association, there was a suggestion that came, not sure from who, but we responded to it by moving parking around to the Basset Street, on Basset Street, proximate to the court. We've since heard from the neighborhood that they preferred it on Franklin Street, so the latest plans will show that we've moved it back. And now, we're at a proposed plan, subject to refinement, that is what we're calling the 10 percent alternative. One of the questions late in the evening at a meeting at the Milton Arts Center was, is there an alternative to the 25 percent plan? And I said initially that we could think about the example of the Milton Hill House, which was produced with 10 percent affordable on a variance basis, that would require a lot of support from neighborhood, these boards, and others, but that that would be an alternative that could arrive at an outcome that would be less dense and potentially work. I know Katie and others suggested that we think, and Alex suggested a zoning alternative. At the time, I was concerned about a zoning alternative. I've thought that very carefully, and I've come around to thinking that zoning is the better approach. And so, our goal at the end is to try to move forward with respect to that. So, to do that, we, the question was, could we reduce the affordable component from 25 percent to 10 percent, reduce the volume of units because we didn't need to subsidize as many affordable units, and otherwise shrink the building in different ways? Quite frankly, it was a move that was difficult to convince the Falcones that it was appropriate to do. I know that we had a meeting with the neighborhood in early December, at which I thought we were going to be prepared to discuss a 10 percent alternative, and we weren't. And it was a tough meeting, and rightfully so. And I think Katie walked in late in the meeting and was surprised to know that we were still working on 25 percent alternative. We went back, and the Falcones gave it really hard thought and came back with a 25 percent, excuse me, a 10 percent alternative. We sat down for a couple of hours in their office late in the afternoon on a Friday and sketched it out and gave it to the architects and said, "Come back to us." So, the new plan, which is substantially where the Falcones need to net out, is 50 units of rental housing, down from 71 to 61, 63 bedrooms. We eliminate two three-bedrooms, which were required by the state regulations if it's a 40 percent, if it's a 25 percent affordable. So, five units would be affordable. We held at the square footage for retail and new office and 6,200 square feet of existing and reduced the parking volume down to 113 spaces. The benefit for the project's perspective is it allows the stormwater to be stored outside of, not under the slab of the building, but in an area between the garage and the existing office building, which works a number of ways better from a town's perspective, I think, in terms of stormwater management. I know that's an issue for the town relative to the 40B project that's being pursued on Randolph Avenue. So, a new sets of renderings, which is still being refined, shows a, from Adams Street, a sort of a roof design that mirrors to some degree 36 Central, where the top-floor units are set inside the roofline. The appearance from the Franklin Street parking lot is substantially similar. We've adjusted the design with some different gable and different treatments. But significantly, on the Basset Street side, we've taken another whole floor off so that the building is designed to step up from Basset Street rather than down from Adams Street. We still have the garage at the ground-floor level, and we have two levels of apartments with the second level of apartments substantially in the roofline of the building. And there's several images relate to that. A couple of other things that we did in the process of that, and the architects, I think, did a nice job, is that, two things. One is, the building now has been designed with respect to Basset Street to have an angle turn at roughly the midpoint of Basset. Benefit of that is it sort of relieves that long plane, a single plane along Basset Street. And if you're walking along Basset Street, you'll tend to see one portion of it and then another portion of it. Obviously, if you're coming up Franklin, you'll see the entirety, but it deflects, and it reduces the feeling of scale. The area for stormwater in this case is between the retaining wall for the garage downstairs and the existing office. That gives us plenty of room in here to work with from stormwater perspective. We've moved the entry to the garage back to Franklin Street as opposed to Adams Street, excuse me, Basset Street. And then, layouts quickly show first level of apartments and amenities on the first floor of retail, significantly with respect to the retail. We're trying to do, we haven't gotten all the way there yet, and we're looking forward to further input from particularly the boards, because it's as much a neighborhood issue as it is a sort of a municipal design issue, is how does, how do we engage and open the area along Adams Court? We have a retail connection design that will connect between the midpoint of the retail area between Adams Court and the parking lot. There'll be three sort of main entries into the retail, one from Adams Street, one from Adams Court, and one from the parking area. There'll be a seating area outside in the court, and then a separate entry into the Then offices on the second floor, again, retail. You see on the third floor that the, there's only a row of apartments over the parking lot, and then, fourth floor, we have additional. This is an early iteration of a plan from the landscape folks to talk about how to address the issue of pedestrian feel for the project. Building is turned, and it's an old iteration with sort of that flat side, but the idea here is a couple of things. One is that rather than treat the parking lot as a parking lot with stores and offices at the other side of the parking lot, the idea is to create a pedestrian-friendly area where cars park and that cars can come through as they're turning around, but it wants to feel like it's a pedestrian place first. We've added sidewalk where none exists now in front of the office building. There'll be seating area outside of sort of retail area, and then this sort of drive aisle as you come through. And additionally, different ideas and concepts about how to green up that space between, the fairly narrow space between the back of sidewalk and the front of this building. The narrowest point is eight feet. With the turn of the building this way, there's more room in here, and Blair is working on some different concepts for that to really green that space, but it's an opportunity. It's an example of the thinking that's sort of going into that level of detail, which I think is significant. So, there were some additional modifications. As I said, we've met twice, a number of times with the Neighborhood Association. We met twice, we met two weeks ago Thursday, and we met this past Monday. Some of the things that we've heard and we're working on in an effort to respond more particularly, can we lower the building, again, relative to Basset Street? Can we adjust the treatment? So, the last plan of the building relative to, I won't go there, relative to Basset Street, is a brick facade garage with clambered windows above. So, move the entry of the garage from, create an entry, a people entry from Basset Street so that it has a feeling of a front door. Move the garage entry back to Franklin Street and berm the area between Basset and the building. So, we've done a couple of things. One is, we changed the facade of the lower level. We've brought the facade down with window treatment with a really, with an interesting door treatment entry into the garage, certainly an amenity that tenants are going to want to have anyway so that they can step out across the street to the market and back without going halfway up the, you know, halfway up the court and around and in and then around. So, that's important. I think to the Milton Hill House, there is an Elliott Street entry level that matches to the upper parking lot level, and a lot of thought and detail went into that with TAT on how to make that combination work, because the neighborhood and the town wanted a front-door presence, although the main presence for the residents would be up top. They really wanted to see it as a front door. Looking at a couple of other things, we've discussed with the neighborhood the notion of trying to lower the slab of the building and perhaps separate the grades of the portion of the building that comes along Basset Street with the building that runs along Adams Court. We think we can come down 12 inches to a foot, which might not sound like a lot, but if you take a 10-foot sense and bring it down to about eight and a half feet and then put a seating wall along the sidewalk and berm that up a couple of feet with plantings, you now create something that feels like it's about five and a half to six feet instead of a 10-foot. The neighborhood is very concerned about the notion that that is connected to the neighborhood and that the residents on this side need to feel like they belong in the neighborhood, that they are welcome to the neighborhood, and that they're welcome back. And so, that's something that we've tried to do. It's difficult to get further down than that because you change the, you now have to ramp down from the entry, and that creates all sorts of issues about parking, about height from a handicap van accessibility perspective, it really adjusts. But we think we can manage that. So, working on those types of things and hope to have those more detailed with respect to that presented to the neighborhood on Tuesday. They've also asked us to look very carefully at how we treat the Adams Street side. And, you know, this is the, we're proposing four stories at Adams Street. It is potentially the first of a number of other developments that will take place out over time, and there is potentially some precedential value to that. Well, you get four stories here, what about there? We can't shrink the building by taking the fourth floor off, but we are looking at ways to step the building back from Adams Street so that, again, we remove, we relieve that four-story feel and step it back. We think there are ways that we can do it, and we're working on that and hope to have a plan, again, to show to the neighborhood on Tuesday with respect to that. The last thing I would, last couple of things I'll do is, I've done a rough parking calculation that is based on a broader parking analysis that I've, parking table that I've done that we've shared with the neighborhood for discussion. There are, as I said, 113 parking spaces proposed, 72 in the garage on one level, 41 outside on the upper level. We're counting on one space per bedroom, 63 bedrooms. I think that might be high relative to the nature and size of the units, that most of the size are small one-bedrooms, but one space per bedroom is what we're counting on. Under zoning, we're required to provide 36 for the new retail, 31 for the new office, 25 for the existing office, and the property parks for Novara and Abbey Park. So, the 36 spaces that are currently outside are available in the evening to relieve the town's, to provide parking for those two restaurant uses. Those have to be maintained, the existing office parking has to be maintained, but we think it can be shared. There is an excellent example. The town has some history with parking sharing. The zoning in particular for the Milton Village overlay, which is the zoning for the 88 Wharf property and the extra-space storage property, have a zoning, a parking sharing table built into the zoning. I've adjusted the percentages a little bit based on what we think is a more appropriate breakdown. We're not far off. That table was also used when 36 Central was approved. That table's not in the zoning, but it's a table that we used when we did the parking sharing calculation at the time that 36 Central was done. So, we certainly need to account for all of the office and retail uses during the day. We need to account for all of the bedrooms uses during, at night. The evening that I'm showing here is a hybrid. This is really sort of at 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Not everybody has gotten home. Some people are still out to dinner, they haven't, and, but, in any event, what we haven't done, and what the neighborhood and I have started to talk about it the other night, is how to further refine the table. I gave you each a copy of the table as it's been developed to date, is how to break it down even further, because 72 spaces inside the building are substantially available for the tenants and the tenants. So, residential tenants, office tenants, new and existing, and retail tenants, business owners and their employees will park in the basement. We think that 72 spaces is adequate to adjust for those. Visitors to the space will, to the place, whether they're retail visitors, whether they're customers of the dentist or otherwise, will more likely park in the parking area up top. That'll be much more of a come-and-go area. 41 spaces up top, we think is adequate to break that down. I know we'll get into greater detail on that discussion, but that's our thinking currently. We need to maximize the uses of the existing spaces. So, the next steps, continue meetings with the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Again, we're meeting with the representatives on next Tuesday night at the library. We hope to begin to work with Planning Board to develop zoning, conduct public meetings and hearings, obviously, with respect to that. One consideration, it's a broader consideration, I think, for the Planning Board and the Selectmen than it is for me, is what does the zoning apply to? Is it somewhat specific to this location, or is it broader? I have no qualms about the notion of project-specific. It's legal, it's perfectly authorized.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm drifting away from the microphone. Sorry. So, we can develop zoning that could be somewhat site-specific or somewhat broader as an overlay. The overlay obviously needs to think about other properties or at least minimum lot sizes to be considered if we're going to think about an overlay. How do you draw other properties in so that those opportunities are there? I know that it is, zoning in Milton is never easy. It takes time. It takes an awful lot of effort. It takes an awful lot of effort by the elected boards to work through it, and the more times you have to work through on a project-specific basis, it's just, you know, it's difficult. So, we'd have to carefully consider that. Our goal is to call for a special town meeting in June. That may be unrealistic, but we think that's possible. If we can continue to work and arrive at something, we think a special town meeting in June could be possible. If not, obviously, we'd be on to... If not, obviously, we'd be on to an October town meeting, but that's the call. So, with that, again, I want to reiterate my appreciation and the level of effort and the sense of goodwill that has been undertaken in the last couple of months with the representatives of the Neighborhood Association. Without their good work, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I hope we're close and I look forward to working with you and them as we move forward. And thank you for your time.
Ned, thank you very much. Before we invite up Stephen Ryan, the president of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, I'd like to open it up to both boards here if they have any questions for Ned based off of this presentation.
I think that developing zoning, if you know what, if the neighborhood and the developer can agree on the parameters of the project, zoning, zoning can be developed quite promptly. And if the zoning is not specific to the site, there's always the possibility that the selectmen can enter in to a development agreement with the developer so that whatever the neighborhood and the developer agree on is guaranteed to be built. And I guess my only other thing is, I think the architecture is improving and I think there's still some room for improvement, especially in that interior court. I see a village there, I see something that's, will make you think that you've gone off to the country somewhere. So, I think that what Ned has said is, I think there's some great progress here. I'd look forward to hearing from Steve and the neighborhood.
Okay. At this point, Steve, if you could come up and join us and give a presentation based upon the input from the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Good evening.
Welcome, Steve. You're welcome. Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Okay. No slides, so you guys are in luck today. 34 slides there, so I think we're, we've got to fill on that. So, thank you to the Board of Selectmen and to the Planning Board for meeting with us tonight. We really appreciate all your time and efforts and meeting with us both here tonight and then independently on your own time. We really appreciate that and understand you guys are volunteers as well as we are. So, just to begin with a safe harbor statement, being a person who works for a software company, I think we need to establish that. So, we certainly are not speaking on behalf of everyone in precincts six and seven. Having said that, we have been proactively, as a neighborhood association, reaching out to the folks and our neighbors via social media channels to connect with them, to let them know that there's obviously a project going on and we're working with the Falconis and the project team to meet and to discuss their plans and iterations and drawings and get their feedback. So, it's a iterative process that involves everyone in the neighborhood, it's not just a sort of vacuum approach. And so, by doing so, we posted alerts via Facebook, we sent emails out to our membership, which is greater than 400. We also leveraged our personal connections across folks and, you know, it's been great. We've got a lot of active participation from folks in our neighborhoods and the dialogue has been great. And I think Ned is accurate in what he's saying is that the conversations are getting much better. The architecture has certainly improved. There are certainly some core concerns that the neighborhood has given back to us. Size, scope of the project is obviously one. Four stories is being, is widely seen as too tall for the neighborhood by almost everyone we talked to, so we're working on that effort. Traffic is also a big one. Parking is sort of the holy grail for East Milton and I know that's what we're working on now and we've been working on a table and we're going to continue to work on that on the 13th as well. Also, one that wasn't mentioned is the impact on the school system. We're very concerned about that. As we all know, the schools are stretched pretty thin and we know that there'll be an impact on that. So, we continue to work together and to listen and to provide that feedback to the neighbors and so they have a, you know, they have a good working understanding of what's happening out with this, with this project. So, the goal, the long-term goal, not too long out, I would imagine that a month or two, would be to take a more refined drawing set, a comprehensive approach to the project and have them present to the neighborhood as a whole. Realizing this may be one or two meetings because of the size we are anticipating, we would find a venue hopefully that can hold everyone, but we want everybody to be able to see and give their input into the project. So, we think that that'll be, this is what our neighbors are telling us they want. And again, you know, we're working on their behalf, we're all volunteers as well. And I could tell you, we're probably putting in between the week and the weekend, probably 12 to 15 hours a week on this project. So, we're actively engaged and we're looking for more members from our neighborhoods to reach out and to work with us as well on this. If I may, I'd like to ask Rich Bullard to come up for a moment. He has some comments, he's more versed on overlays than I am, so he wanted to make a couple of comments on that, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Come on up, Rich.
Thank you. I want to just start by thanking Chairman Burns and Selectman Colin and Selectman Wells for, you know, getting behind the neighborhood and asking kind of for a pause and putting together this committee and, you know, allowing us to spend the time, you know, investing in it. I don't want to repeat anything Steve said, but, you know, just to hit home what he said about what we feel our job is, is just kind of getting in front of this and listening and providing feedback to the neighborhood. So, we feel like there's definitely a ways to go here, but, you know, we appreciate the progress that we've made and thankful that the Falconis have been coming to our meetings and working with us. I will say, you know, I spent five years on the Warren Committee and sitting on the other side of the table, watching these projects come in, I have to say I was a huge fan of spot zoning. You know, it felt like it kind of paused everything and allowed the neighborhoods to talk and get involved. But, I have to say, being on this side now and being a part of it, it's a lot of work. We've spent, you know, the committee has spent countless hours, days and nights outside of the meetings with the Falconis, getting on conference calls last minute and, you know, meetings on the weekends and at night, just to try and get ready to have these conversations and it's taxing. It's, and it's also tough to be the ones that are getting out in front of this and trying to slow things down so the neighborhood can hear about things and be a part of it. You know, so I have to say that I'm really hoping that we can kind of, you know, we're, I think we have a proposal in front of the Board of Selectmen to look at a, an overlay district. I think, you know, my ask is that you guys consider that, you know, and take a hard look at it with the Planning Board because, you know, as Ned said, this, you know, you look at Adams Street, what they're asking for is four stories. Personally, I think it's a bit too high for Adams Street, but we know that, you know, the square might not be that big, but there's a lot more developers that could possibly come in and match what they're doing right down the line. And so, we're a bit worried that what we're doing now, somebody else is going to have to do, jump out in front, slow it down and bring the neighborhood in. And quite honestly, it's unfair to get them to have to do that. And like, from my, from my point of view, I feel like we're a little behind the eight ball, we're under the gun, we're trying to stay abreast. I mean, luckily, we've got some great neighbors, I mean, we've got architects and lawyers and folks like that in the neighborhood, so they're lending their time. But I don't know how that's going to go the next time around. So, I feel like putting a more comprehensive plan together will be better for the developers, will be better for the neighbors, you know, looking at this as kind of a larger project instead of a one-off. Especially because these are different developers that are going to come in and, quite honestly, we want not a hodgepodge of buildings put in, but we want a good comprehensive thought. Like what was just said, Alex mentioned, you know, having that kind of feel in the middle of the court, that's fantastic. But, what happens if we don't get in front of that and slow it down? So, that's just, just my worry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming up and, again, I'll give an opportunity to both boards to give some input. I personally want to just thank both working groups and both boards here for coming together and to work to try to get progress. And I think that progress is being made. Quite frankly, I think that it's getting close, but I think that, at the same point from my personal view, is that slow is better on projects like this. I really believe that we need to get this right. It's in a neighborhood. I try to put, you know, my shoes on, empathizing with whether or not I lived in that neighborhood and what would I feel like, you know? And, you know, I know Bob Falconi and his family have been tremendous assets to this town and will continue to be. And I think, so with that, we have a great developer who's been willing to be out in front, working and very transparent. I think that that's very helpful. But, from my perspective, I still would like to see this, you know, go at a pace where everything is vetted so that it's done right and right for the neighborhood. Because I think that, you know, you know, East Milton is our largest business district. It's got an incredible neighborhood, you know, or multiple neighborhoods with lots of childrens and seniors. And I know I brought it up in the past about, about safety and traffic and I just want to get this right. I just want to make sure that, that this isn't rushed, that this is, you know, fully vetted and ideal for everybody involved. So, that's my point of view. If anybody else has any input, if not, we will get right into questions and, anybody else, Cheryl?
Yes. Cheryl Taguayis, member of the Planning Board. Have you folks on the Board of Selectmen had a discussion in light, David, of what you just said about not rushing, about whether you think the special town meeting in June provides adequate time for issues to be worked out and for zoning to be written? Alex, on our side also, just with the requirements, the legal requirements in terms of public hearing and notice and how much time it takes to get the warrant printed, et cetera. So, has anybody mapped out that timeline?
I, we really haven't had a public discussion about that. I'm happy to now. I personally feel, I don't want to rush that and I don't, I don't want to just jam something through that, that unless it can be done, unless an agreement could be, could be made over the next couple of meetings and that we do have the appropriate time, I just, I personally don't see any rush to get it done in June unless it could be done based upon the agreement by both parties.
I guess I agree. I think I'm the one that threw out the idea of June, but that was about two months ago. So, you know, the closer we get towards the spring, we face some challenges. So, I think our board will be looking to see whether the Planning Board thinks there's enough time to draft zoning and to go through the public hearing process. You know, if you're looking at, say, the third week in June, which I think is when we had the override last year, you really don't want to go beyond that for a town meeting because a lot of people are on vacation at that point. So, that would kind of put you, you'd have 14 days before the town meeting, I think 14 days, to have to check, but to get the warrant into the houses. So, that really leaves you with the end of May when you want the warrant in the post office, if that's the timeline. And you have to leave the Warren Committee time to put it together, go to the print and have their discussions and hearings after the public hearing with the Planning Board. So, it seems to me that we'd be looking to the Planning Board as to whether you think that's feasible.
So, I'm sorry, Alex, just a minute. So, Katie, when would the Planning Board then, do you think, need to have the zoning written and ready for Warren Committee, given that end of June timeline?
May? April?
Mar, I think, well, I think March in order to give the Warren Committee really April, but I don't know, I'm not sure what the timing requirements are on your public hearings once you have zoning drafted. You know, can you have it when you're still in the process and then do you have to have another public hearing once it's in final form? That I'm not sure about your process.
I agree with Katie. My concern is, I wanted to hear both from the developer, the Falconis, and from Stephen and Peter and Rich. I knew the neighbors, we kind of knew where they've been going in the past few weeks, but we haven't heard from you. So, we're really kind of interested in what you think as far as the timeline. Because you're really the, we may set the date for a special town meeting, but if there were to be one, but you're the, you're the vetting body here on this, if I'm correct.
I, as I, as I say, I think that you're dealing with a 51,000 square foot lot and you can, it wouldn't, it would be applicable to all 51,000 square foot lots in the, in the village and, but if there's an agreement, if the neighborhood and the developer can agree on the basic parameters of the development, writing zoning which would enable that development is significantly easier than writing zoning that will enable some development that you don't have any idea what it's going to be. So, I think it's important for the neighborhood and the developer, if at all possible, to agree on the parameters. And once that happens, I don't see that writing zoning is going to be as hard as some people think because we've, I, I, once you, if you know what the goal is of writing the zoning which will enable the goal is, is quite easy, much or more easy than if you don't know what the goal is. Once you have zoning, you, the Planning Board does have to have a hearing, there has to be, it has to be submitted to the selectmen and the selectmen will then call a special town meeting. But, the Warren Committee needs a couple of weeks. I, June is possible if things work between the neighborhood and the developer. That's really the critical part of the process. The Planning Board can make this happen as far as writing zoning is concerned, but we're not going to write zoning if the development that might be produced isn't agreed on. I personally think that having the selectmen enter a development agreement requiring that if the zoning gets passed, the development that's agreed on will in fact be built. I think that's a very useful adjunct to zoning. So, I'm, I think, I think that June is possible and if it, you know, if it's not, I would think that October seems very, very feasible.
Brian's got to stand up.
Brian.
Thanks. First, I want to, I want to applaud the neighborhood and the developer for getting together and talking before coming to this board. I especially want to applaud the neighborhood and second a lot of what they said tonight. To do this over and over again is just, it's just painful and it's tedious and it's non-productive. And I think that this is exactly why we don't want to do this. We don't want to be sitting here trying to back into a date by which we need to submit zoning for a project that's going to be defining East Milton Square for 50 to 100 years. So, I think an overlay is the only way to go. That's not going to be a surprise to anybody in this room if they've paid any attention to Planning Board in the last four years. But I think it's, it's so important that it be done in a way that prevents these sort of conversations from happening over the next three, four, five years as more and more parcels become available in East Milton Square. All of us don't want to have to be here for the next three years, sitting here on a cold winter night, figuring out what we're going to do for the next parcel. Let's just get it right. Let's just figure out what the neighborhood wants, let's work with the property owners, let's put together good zoning and let's get some good projects. Because this is just, this is what we're going to face otherwise, is sitting here trying to figure out how we get to June. If we're saying we had, the Planning Board has to have zoning language for March, that's three meetings. We only have three meetings between now and the end of March and we have a huge amount of things on our docket right now. So, I appreciate Alex's confidence, but I don't share it at all. And so, I'm happy to throw my back into it and work as hard as everyone else to get it done, but I think it should be done on a comprehensive basis so we don't have to keep doing this over and over again.
Well, to follow that applause now, Brian. I, it's funny, I had a conversation today. I, it's funny, I had a conversation today about this very topic, of how much effort goes into crafting zoning and to make it a parcel by parcel in one neighborhood which has very similar characteristics, is a ton of work for everyone involved. And the issues are going to be very much the same or very similar in the entirety of the business district in East Milton Square. So, the neighborhood has asked for an overlay or asked us to look at an overlay. That may take longer, because it takes some analysis on a parcel by parcel basis, but it seems to me what happens with this parcel could inform an overlay overall. So, I think even though this might move at a slightly different pace, it should set the groundwork for an overlay. And that way, the effort that all of the people who've been putting into this particular project can see that effort applied to other sites without having to spend the next five years or 10 years of their lives attending meetings 15 hours a week. They didn't sign up for it like we did. But it, and it's important for all of us to think about East Milton Square. It is an important part of the town overall for a lot of people, a lot of, for the businesses that are there, for the people who patronize the businesses. It's where people hold signs, you know, during elections. So, there's, there's a lot that needs to be taken into consideration. There are already a lot of moving parts with what's happening with signalization, what's happening with traffic analysis at the state level, and these are things that I've suggested should be looked at in a comprehensive way, that those, that there's no one project that's going to solve East Milton's parking and traffic problems. And if we look at an overlay district, then we can look at the impacts of redevelopment on a larger scale, which is the way it should be done. Is there district parking that we should look at? So, is there signalization that needs to be modified? Do we need to look at what our neighbors are doing in Quincy? But these are the parts that you can do if you're looking at zoning in a larger context. So, I would agree with Brian that, that this project doesn't want to get held up too long, though, and they've done a lot of work, and that we should see how we can learn from this project in applying to the overlay. But I am concerned about having three planning board meetings to write the zoning. We've spent lots longer than that, working on other zoning very recently.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So, Denny Swinson, planning board member. I, I think that this project is going to set the tone for this area and this neighborhood, and it's just too important to rush. I think the size, scale, scope is something that, that the neighborhood and the Falcones have been working on, but that's just the beginning, and we're not even quite there yet. I, I'm also interested to work with the neighborhood and the Falcones on pedestrian-friendly. We're just beginning, and, and that's going to be so critical. And it does kind of fall into a lot of what Brian's been saying. You know, this is a 50 to 100-year project. This is going to be something that the rest of the developers are going to look to. So, I just want to get it right, and I think it's worth taking a couple extra months and to, you know, all throw our back into it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
I, I think that writing an overlay would take six months, eight months, a year. We need consultants. We need to get money from the warrant committee. I think it's, it's nice to say that let's do an overlay that'll just take care of East Milton Square. Whenever someone wants to do anything, you just go read the overlay language, and somehow, as if by magic, it will say, oh, well, this is what you have to do. The sites in East Milton are different, and you're not going to make one size fits all. And postponing things to think that you can write an overlay that can do that, I think is a mistake, and I think that the Falcones would have good cause to say that this process seems to be going nowhere. If, you know, writing an overlay is, is what the, the issue of making, getting this project to move forward requires. I just don't think it, I, I don't think it's in the cards.
I just want to see whether we can consider a hybrid approach here, because it sounds like we've got members of the planning board making good points about the overlay, but also about the time sensitivity that may be here, which has also been expressed to our board by the developer at some previous meetings. So, if it's possible for the planning board, and this all falls on your board, so we're, you know, we're sensitive to that. But if it's possible to consider a zoning approach for this project, given all of the good work that's been taking place, maybe to be followed by, or maybe in conjunction with overlay, which sounds like it's going to take more time, if that's a possible approach that the planning board might want to consider, I think that might at least address the, this current situation that we're in, which we've, again, unless Ned or the Falcones can indicate that maybe October is more realistic for them at this point, the message we had been getting was that it really needed to be something this spring, and that's why we came up with the idea of June. But if it's something that, there's a little more flexibility, given where the parties are all at, working together, then we should, we should find that out. And if it's possible, maybe the planning board could consider a dual-track approach here. Just put that up for thought for the planning board. Obviously, it's up to you.
And I agree with Brian, and going back to what Rich Beal has said. This project clearly, to me, and I live there in East Milton, is, it's very, you know, it speaks very loudly that the face of East Milton is going to change from what it's been for the past 25 years, since the Fruit Center was built, really. And we, I think we all know that there are going to be other developers, as you said, Cheryl, they're going to come right on the heels of whatever is done. So, I, I think that the work, that whatever the timeline is, or however we do do this, if an agreement is reached, I think that both of us, both of our boards, need to keep that primary thought in mind, that whatever's taking place in the square, we need to maintain the character of what it is going forward. And whatever is approved or goes or is built there, we need to really consider, you know, the quality of the life that people have in this town now. We want to maintain that. Even though it may not be exactly the same, people have an expectation, and we want to fulfill that.
April.
April Lammerow, planning board member. I personally think site-specific zoning gives neighborhoods a false sense of security, and I think it's very much for the, for the reasons that were described. I mean, the way that that works is that you have a group of well-meaning, well-educated residents who are willing to dive in and spend hundreds of hours trying to work through these details on a very, very specific zoning article for a very specific parcel. And you don't know if those same people are going to be available for the next parcel and the next parcel, or if people are going to be aware of what's going to happen, or what tools are going to be utilized, including 40B and others. So, I much favor the idea of a zoning overlay. I hear what Alex is saying, and that it's challenging, because there are various sites in the square that require different types of considerations, but I think there are also, so I guess my point is, I'm very open to what Katie described as a dual approach, looking at this one project to advance it, but using that as a foundation for an overlay. I'm also open to the idea of considering different types of overlays, where our, our practice of zoning in Milton is incredibly specific, and I'm not sure an overlay has to be. We might be able to develop an overlay that has a special permit required, where during the special permit process, you go through a lot of the specifics. But the overlay could set out the parameters of a building envelope, so you couldn't go higher the next feed, you couldn't have more the next amount of units, just certain protections for the neighborhoods, that you know that there is a certain amount of consistency as far as maximum building footprint. And some of the other details could be worked out during the special permitting process, knowing that it could never get bigger, or, you know, certain things could never apply because you have this foundational overlay in place. So, I'm in favor of two different types of approaches, happy to work on it to the extent as needed over the next couple of months. I am with Alex. I think anything is possible, and perhaps we could get to a June date, but I also think, like everyone else has said, we need to make sure that we get it right, and if it takes longer, it's going to have to take longer.
Thank you. Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to open it up to Citizens Speak. And what I'm going to request, once again, if you weren't here at the very beginning, I'm going to ask you to sign in at the sign-up sheet over there with your name and address, and when you come to the microphone, that you state your name and address, and that you keep it to three minutes, and please don't be offended if I tell you to, to kind of finish up, because we may have a lot of people here to speak, and we do want to hear from everyone. So, at this point, you're welcome to, to sign up, and we'll go right down the line.
Assistant, please?
Please sign in first.
I've already done.
Oh, you have? Okay.
I'm first on the list.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Field Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I guess I look back to the situation where we were looking at parking on the cap over the expressway. And at that time, there was a lot of discussion about the traffic flow in East Milton, parking in East Milton, and one would think that those problems would have been attacked and perhaps resolved, but they're not. And I keep wondering, what was so difficult about fixing the traffic problem that it has to wait until now to be resolved? Or will it ever be resolved? Another concern I have is the weaponization of 40B. Every time a developer comes to the table with a project, we get threatened that it's going to turn into a 40B project, and that we're going to have to put up with that, so everybody concedes. And, and that weaponization is wrong. So, I guess I would say that with respect to traffic in East Milton, parking in East Milton, and the weaponization of 40B, these issues were all in the hands of the Board of Selectmen, the planning board, and the Town Planning Director, and they haven't been addressed. And I worry that they'll never be addressed. One quick point about the slide of Ned's was that he shows 50 units with 63 parking places. I keep wondering, how many families have one car? Is really, I think what we do, we tend to do with all these projects is underestimate the need for parking rather than overestimating. With the existing problems of parking in East Milton, I think we ought to be overly generous with parking estimates. I look at Steel and Rye, for instance. There's no parking. What happens? The neighbors all have problems with parking on the street, and that's wrong. So, we need to be, we need to address traffic before we get into a project like this, and it's going to take time. We need to be overly generous with parking in East Milton, because it's an existing problem that everybody's well aware of, and we need to stop weaponizing 40B, because it's wrong. The other thing that I talked about in the planning board, the last planning board meeting, is enforcement. You know, I'm very familiar with how conditions are put in a, in a, let's say, a zoning document, and they're not enforced. And that lack of enforcement becomes a very difficult problem for the neighbors. To go to the zoning board of appeals, you've got to spend $400. And the last time I went to the zoning board of appeals, I was told that I would get a written response in 30 days. We're almost to 30 days. I have no written response. So, I keep wondering, you know, we hired a zoning enforcement officer, and I thought we would get zoning enforcement from that. You know, we have a full-time body, and I don't see it. I don't see zoning enforcement with respect to the special permit that exists behind my house. And there was a discussion also about enforcement at the last planning board meeting, when it was, talked about problems that exist on Brush Hill Road with a dead beech tree that was supposed to be preserved, but instead the developer put dumpsters on the roots, and the tree died. And, you know, what's going to be done now? And the discussion was about enforcement, and nobody was quite sure how to enforce. They thought maybe it was a good idea to write a letter to the, the building commissioner. So, we don't know. We put conditions on, but the conditions aren't enforced. In fact, I understand that the neighbors took pictures and sent them, but nothing happened. So, until we get serious about enforcement, there really is no point to putting conditions in a zoning document, because, you know, it, it just isn't, isn't observed in general. So, what I wanted to say was that my neighbors, my friends, and I wrote a, an article for the warrant. It will be in the warrant. I looked at other towns where a zoning change moratorium was put into effect, and I believe that we should do that. And we should do it not only for East Milton, but for the entire town. You know, there's talk here about the time it takes for, the time it takes to look at all these zoning issues, and really, it complicates enforcement. So, why not look at zoning comprehensively throughout the town before we start undertaking another piece-by-piece zoning effort? It's a bigger effort, if, if you talk about an overlay, but it still doesn't deal with all the town zoning issues. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Walker, 1776 Canton Ave. And in the interest of full disclosure, I am the person suing our town, my town, over the bylaw, the greater state bylaw. I have to commend the neighborhood. Let me say that if you weren't standing up the way you're standing up today, you'd have the 40B threat. Numbers, you can get it. It's unbelievable. I came here, we didn't have that neighborhood up on Canton Ave. I'm the only one who's going to be looking at a block of townhouses. Rush, they signed the developer's agreement the night the bylaw was signed. The board was threatened over and over with 40B on the record. In fact, Chairman Whiteside invited the developer a year before to the site to use the cluster zoning in an email 12 months before. And what happens? No cluster zoning. Townhouses. Drive down to Woodmere. I'm telling you, you're doing a great job. Get the overlay. You see the rush? We can do it fast. I'm telling you, you have the numbers, they're going to listen. I regret now not going to the selectman and saying to you guys, do you know what's going on at the planning board? You are changing the playbook. You are changing Mr. Corcoran's playbook. It's actually, looks like a nice plan. Maybe some pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, push them back on Basset Street. It's made great progress. Eight months for an overlay? What's eight months? For quality. 150 feet from my house is going to be a bank of townhouses. I'm going to protect my property value. The developer comes in front of the board and says, I want $3 million, an outright $3 million, Mr. Corcoran. Mr. Whiteside is on the record. He didn't want townhouses in his neighborhood. Remember? Remember that with Mr. Hamilton? You got your cluster zoning, didn't you? Mr. Whiteside, you are biased towards the developers. It's clear. It showed tonight. You can do it fast, right? You can do your zoning fast. You have taken my time away from my three young children. And I'll tell you right now, I know I'm an uphill battle on that bylaw. Special permit application, special permit. I will hold you to everything. This is the town I grew up in. And again, I hear the selectman, I'm like, I'm an idiot, but not going. But you had to wonder, why would a man at, why would he say, we're fortunate to have a developer, when you all were threatened? You know you were threatened. Remember? Remember the threats? Yes. So, keep doing what you're doing, because then they'll, you've changed the playbook, and you should be proud of yourselves. Because I went to articles on designing in context.
Mr. Walker, we're at almost four minutes, so if you could finish it, I'd appreciate it.
I'll wrap it up, but keep, you're going to make it a nice development, make, you're an architect. I mean, they made great progress. But you have to address all of East Milton. Spend the time and make a statement, and make it better for the whole neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anybody else looking to speak at Citizens Speak? Go ahead.
Why don't we, why don't you bring the list up, and we'll just...
Yeah, if you can bring it up, I'll call it out.
You may as well add my name to the end.
Might as well.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Stephen Reins.
Okay.
Okay. Apologize, in which bowl has already spoke. Peter Dunn. Peter, if you could just give your street address as well, wouldn't you?
Good evening. My name is Peter Dunn. I live at 84 Franklin Street in East Milton. This will be right on my street. I've been a member of the working group and been working with my neighbors and discussions with the Falconeys and their representatives. I think I'd just echo what Steve has said. I think we're making progress. There's still some significant items to get over, and we'll see where those discussions go. Just a note on the working group, we've been a sounding board, we've been providing feedback. Ultimately, it's a decision for the neighborhood and for the neighbors. And as Steve mentioned, our plan is to take it back for that larger meeting, so that the neighborhood can really make the decision. With respect to the overlay, I do support that. It's just a concept. I think it should be grasped as an opportunity for everyone on these joint boards to really shape the future of East Milton and the town. That's the gateway to the town. Can make the improvements to the square. Everyone knows about the traffic issues that are there. And really set the field for what, what this is going to look like for generations. So I, I thank you for your time, and I do support the, the overlay approach. We will continue to discuss these matters with the, with the Falconeys and the representatives. And it is a, a project to get right, whether it's through an overlay or elsewhere. We really do want to get it right, and I think we're going to continue to do the work to try to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Bowler.
I was just a side of the sheet.
Okay. That's fine. Jerry Tugger. Good evening.
Good evening. Can people hear me? Yeah. I'm Jerry Tugger, 31 Rockwell Avenue in East Milton, and I've been a member of the East Milton Neighbors Association Working Group. And with regard to the discussion of spot zoning or a more comprehensive approach, I think it really limits us if we are looking at just one location without having any idea of what might be happening in the rest of East Milton. A concern I've had, and I expressed that in a recent letter to the Milton Times, is that we don't see the level of comprehensive planning that I hear at least some of the planning boards speaking on behalf of. And I think it is urgently needed. So I would like to speak very much in favor of an overlay rather than moving to spot zoning. I worry very much that we can do it quickly is going to get East Milton residents backed off from anything that might be done very quickly.
Thank you. Okay. Tony Farrington.
Hi. Good evening. I had one question.
Tony, could you just state your address, please?
Of course. Tony Farrington, 114 Audubon Road.
Thank you.
In the remarks that were presented earlier regarding the increase potentially in school enrollment as a direct result of this project, I know that an increase in school enrollment is an underlying concern that many people in the town of Milton have, rightfully so, especially coming on the heels of the recent article in the Milton Times. But unless I'm missing something, I'd like to get some clarity on how this project, as it's currently designed, 50 units, 39 of which are one bedrooms, 10 of which are two bedrooms, and then potentially a three-bedroom unit, how that would result in enrollment that's so significant that it would put a strain on the elementary school? Because by all accounts, and admittedly, it's somewhat speculative, you're looking at one bedrooms, which is a single person, potentially a couple, a two-bedroom, newly-married couple or a couple with a small child. I just don't see how that would increase school enrollment to the point where it would cause a strain. Is, is there anyone that could potentially address that? Yes, Steve?
Have you looked at the cost per student to attend Milton's public schools, per student? We have. Let me examine that. You should take a deep dive on that fact, and then we can have a follow-up discussion on that, because it's over 200,000 per pupil to attend school. So we're, we're concerned that they're not going to drive enough tax revenue into the city to support additional schemes in there. Additionally, the schools are overburdened already, the classes are big, they're large, 25-plus. So we're concerned. I, I hear what you're saying, but there is no speculation, there is no mandate in these apartments that said no children were there.
And I, and I understand that, and I don't want this discussion to turn into a larger discussion about school enrollment. Just within the context of this project specifically, I don't understand, given the way that it's described here tonight, how it would result in, it, it might result in some school-aged children attending, but to the point that it bleeds over or crosses over a line that it creates a strain, I just, I mean, you're talking potentially, Steve, like really, single numbers, like single digits.
Why don't you come up and...
Yeah. It might be best just to put this...
I think that's a fair comment. I think what I would say, though, is it's hard to have a full discussion when you've missed, when you've missed the first half of the discussion, which is, sorry.
I think it's hard. I don't want to get into a debate on this, but what I would say is, fair question, but I think the, also, the counterpoint to that is, it's very difficult for you to comment on that, coming more than halfway through all of our discussions that we've had over months, right? So my, my point to you would be, let's take that offline, let's have a discussion around that. I think that's important. But what, what I would say is, what's important to East Milton is what we're talking about here. And this is one of the concerns that our constituents are bringing forward to us. Fair enough?
Sure. Thanks for your questions, Ryan. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Peter Dunn.
He wants to speak one more time again.
Sorry. I appreciate the consideration.
Yeah, no problem.
So Peter Dunn, also, I'm 84 Franklin Street. I'm a town meeting member. When this project came on, it's 71 units, I reached out to the Assessors Department and asked them what the tax revenue could be for estimate, to see what the town revenue impact might look like. What I got back was between 200 and $250,000 a year. That was at 71 units. The cost to educate a student in Milton is $15,000 per year. So you can do the math. I think the other part to think about is that, again, this is a precedential building. So if you start to get a whole bunch of these, maybe there's only a few kids in each, but it can start to add up if you have four stories here and four stories there at $15,000 a pop. That's before you get a police call, an ambulance call, a fire call. So I do think that it's prudent for the town to think about the financial impact with respect to both the tax revenues and the potential outlays, and the school is, could be a significant piece of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Suzanne Brown.
Hello, Suzanne Brown, 566 Adam Street. To get back to Mr. Farrington, I am a single mother with two children that went to Milton schools. And actually, one of them went to Blue Hills, which actually cost the town even more. Okay, let's get on. There was no mention of where deliveries are going to be made to this property, where the trash is going to be taken out, where these deliveries are going to be made. Hypothetically, they'll say, oh, between 7:00 and 9:00. If you come down Franklin Street anytime between 7:00 and 9:00, it's a one-way. I'm dealing with it right now on Church Street. They're not supposed to be there, but they're there. The picture that Ned put up there, as far as where, who's going to park where, when, on and on, where are the visitors for this place going to park? If Novara is, Novara and Abbey Park, which it's supposed to be Novara, is taking up 41 of the above-ground spots. No mention. Currently, there's five parking spots for the public on Basset and three, at least on Franklin. With the opening now being on Franklin, is there going to be any impact on those spots? And what's the impact on Franklin Street? I understand you have to have an opening for the parking, whether it's going to be on Basset or whether it's going to be on Franklin. I understand the neighbors want it on Franklin. Ideally, I really would like it to come onto their parking lot and then have to deal with it, because I think there's going to be a lot of accidents, because nobody stops at Basset, nobody stops at Franklin, even the, the stop signs. And lastly, the traffic study that was submitted, was submitted while Adam Street was being worked on. And people were avoiding Adam Street at all costs, because you were tied up with, what was it, N-Star or whatever. So the traffic study that was submitted is faulty. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for Citizens Speak this evening? Okay. Would either board like to make a final comment? Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I want to thank...
Why don't we, I mean, we, we do encourage the parties to keep talking, and I've heard, you know, I, I think the idea of an overlay is great, but I think the reality indicates that we should seriously consider zoning this project and not assuming that East Milton Square is going to be entirely changed, because it won't be if you don't change the zoning. If you change the zoning for East Milton Square through an overlay, you can be assured that you will get change, and that will be the change that you authorize in the overlay. And what you, what you're going to put in the overlay, I'm not sure. You're going to have to, your, your group is going to have to talk about, well, let's not talk about this specific project, let's talk about all projects. And what sort of controls do we want on them? It's a tough, it's tough. It's a tough thing to do. I, I would suggest that we should perhaps revisit some more restrictive zoning as, to make this project work, because if the Falconeys walk away from it, there's not going to be an overlay. They're going to do something else. No, that's, that's about it.
Well, I want to thank all the residents who have taken time out of their busy nights, especially on a night where the weather wasn't so perfect to come out tonight, to share their input. That input is incredibly meaningful to all of us. It's meaningful to both working groups, who have spent countless hours, volunteer hours. I commend them for it. I understand what they're going through. But, you know, as we, as we revert back to earlier discussions, this is a project that is going to shape East Milton Square for 50 years. We need to get this right. And, you know, I, I, again, like to caution and say, let's slow it down a bit and make sure that it gets right. But I know that this meeting is very productive. I know the meetings that both working groups have had have been extremely productive, and I'm confident that the next couple meetings will be productive. And let's hope that we can get to a finish line where it works for the neighborhood and it works for the developer. And I want to thank both boards tonight for coming out and sharing their input. Cheryl, you have a comment?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just one other comment for the parties as they're working through some of the issues, as I'd like to encourage them to give some thought to Adam's Court, because I think as we think about East Milton, East Milton Square and the larger picture, we have a real opportunity there to link the businesses on Adam Street to the Fruit Center and the marketplace, and have that be a lively pedestrian connection. I think it would be a shame not to have that incorporated into the thinking now, just like they're thinking about what the pedestrian's going to feel like on Basset Street, because there's lots of great opportunities in other communities, and that could be a very lively space. But at four stories straight up with no articulation, it's going to become cavernous. And I really want to encourage them to work on that while they're working on the other details.
That's a great point, Cheryl, and thank you for sharing that. So at this point, I, I think that these two boards would, would probably be willing to meet again in the future after the next couple meetings between the working groups. And let's hope that we can, we can get to a, a game plan for the future to make sure that this is a, a project that works, again, both for the neighborhood and for the developer. And I think that we're on a positive route. So let's, let's, that's the takeaway for tonight, is that, that we are moving forward and, and hopeful. But please keep continuing to give your input. We want to hear from you, and, and we want to be supportive. So thanks again, everyone. Have a safe travel home tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.